Is indicative of Mashpee in general is how student focused and centered you all are. And knowing the people that are sitting over here, I know that you are the people that have been the leaders in that. It's been an honor to serve with you and you know, this is not an original saying, but you know, what do teachers make? They make a difference and you guys have done that repeatedly year after year. And we are going to miss you, but you have, you've earned this rest of relaxation. Travel, find your, your other activities that bring you joy and, and because you've served it. You've made a difference for a long period of time. You've made your impact and now it's time to celebrate and enjoy it. So congratulations.
Thank you.
I know some family members are here, so if you want the photo. Okay, so first I have Susan Schreiner.
How are you?
You sure you're looking good? Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, I have to get one too.
And for those who don't know, when we walked in, I reminded Ms. Schreiner that she was my science teacher back when I was little. Here in this building.
Congratulations.
Thirty-five years.
Who's this one?
Do you want to meet up?
Smile at me.
Mrs. Daley. Mrs. Daley, we still say, well, Mrs. Daley.
And Dan Raven? I love the teacher.
I love the teacher.
Um, actually Sharon. Sharon, I got the same one.
This is special because she's letting me take her piece too.
I know, I don't usually let.
Look at me.
Thank you. Mr. T.
The leader of the band and stuff. Thank you.
Mr. T. I picked up my students when he caught it, caution it, and he made me play the drums, which I couldn't do. Oh my goodness.
I love it.
Ms. Riley.
Thank you.
Mark Rothback.
He's not here.
I didn't think I saw him, but. Happy party.
Thank you.
Sorry. Is that Trion? Thank you.
I don't know, these smiles are too big.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Sharon. Uh, she wasn't at Mashpee officially, my daughter also has preschool teacher. She came the year after, because that's when the preschool opened.
Thank you, Sharon.
Right. And last but by no means least, Colleen Strohschke. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you all.
Thank you everybody.
Thank you all.
Yep. I got doubles in the cupboard. I wasn't sure if people were really looking.
All over the place.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, you're leaving? You don't want to enjoy?
I hope you're all going to a lovely dinner to celebrate.
Enjoy it guys. Thank you so much.
You know, we celebrate the students so much. It's, it's nice to celebrate those who make our students as awesome as they are. So again, bittersweet, but well earned. So, okay. Moving right along. Oh, we have a second public comment. We'll skip that because we already did it. Anyone here for public comment? We'll check again since it's on the agenda. No? Okay, moving right along. Approval of the minutes of May 21st, 2025, pages two and three in our agenda packet. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I overly approved the meeting minutes as presented from May 21st, 2025.
Thank you, Brian. Oh, and a second.
I'll make that second.
Thank you, Dan. Any discussion? Edits? Hearing none. Kelly.
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
I also am a yes. Minutes are approved. Okay. Okay, in your packets this week, we were, um, there is a request. We were going to have a brief presentation from the Mashpee Middle High School's science teacher, LaShona Matelli, about a proposal for a wetlands living lab at the high school. So Ms. Matelli, the floor is yours. I believe you have a guest with you as well. So both of you, please come up and if your guests would mind introducing themselves.
Sure. Would you like us to sign in as well?
Nope. You're on the agenda already.
My name is Ian Ives and I'm here on behalf of Wetland Restoration Training, who's been asked to support LaShona and her team in wetland restoration creation at the school.
Okay, how do I, do I go stand up there?
Yeah, you might want to take the microphone with you though, because we're our viewing audience. That way they, you can take it right off. You don't have to hold it. You can take it right off.
Sorry, I'm a newbie.
No, it's okay. Just put your mic on.
Okay, so, um, I'm Shona Matelli. I'm a science teacher at the middle high school. Uh, this is my sixth year teaching and I am a huge environmentalist. And one of my innate goals as a person and as a teacher is to try and get outside as much as possible and to get our students meaningfully outside as much as possible. So I heard about this possibility of creating vernal pools years ago. Um, when I was working at Falmouth Academy, I came upon one and I went, this is interesting. Doesn't look like it would naturally be here. And then I found that there were ones at other schools and I was like, this is something we need to do at our school. So I contacted some of my people that I know in the environmental field and was put in touch with Ian. And he said, yeah, this is something we can do. You just need to gather some money. This is about the budget it would cost and we can make this happen. So that's what I started doing about two years ago, just realizing, okay, once I knew what the budget was, this is what we needed to do to make it happen. Okay, so initially, um, our initial funding comes from something called the Grass Roots Fund, which I learned of from the Association to Preserve Cape Cod. This is a small grant funder that is very much based in social justice and environmental justice. And they were looking for and would only fund projects that are very much from the ground up and have a lot of community involvement, student involvement, and a lot of diverse voices. So, um, I went to the Environmental Club last year and I said, this is something that I would like to do. Would you all like to be a part of it? And I have an incredible group of Environmental Club members right now, more than 20 strong, who are really committed and really dedicated to conservation and environmental issues. And they said, absolutely, we want to do this. So I put together this grant and we were funded $3,400, which was our seed money. And I went to Ian, I said, I've got to start. We've, we're ready. We can get the ball rolling because I know I'll be able to find the rest of it to get it going. So they really liked the fact that we were very much student run and based on what Ian has told us, on the days of the build, it's as many hands on deck as possible. So he's going to tell you more about the specifics of that, but there'll be a lot of student engagement on the days of the build. Okay, so, um, a little bit about what this will be from our end and then Ian will get into the specifics of the actual build day. I hope that the entire student body will be able to participate in this project. Not just on the day of the build, but moving forward. This is something that, um, any student will be able to enjoy and appreciate because it's, it's a great opportunity to understand not just conservation, but also recreation and peace and tranquility out in a natural space. So justifications, if you need them. It's for any student, whether they are an art student, an English student, I want the dog student, a student of different disabilities, can come and enjoy this space. So we hope that it is a holistic space, which has benefits to connect students with the environment, but it also touches many of our science standards on a kind of foundational level. There are many science standards from seventh grade through biology that talk about human impacts, that talk about invasive species, that talk about water quality monitoring. And a vernal pool like this has the ability to kind of be that, that benchmark, that keystone space that we can just walk to. So the beauty of this is it's going to take us three minutes to get there. We can spend a whole class time at the site. We can take water samples. We can look for species. We can measure it. So for AP environmental students and for ninth grade environmental students, for seventh grade students who are learning about ecosystem studies and a variety of different habitats, we can go to this site and we can get a hands-on, not just conceptual understanding, but it'll really bring the learning of habitat diversity, species diversity, and human impacts into a real tangible thing that we can talk about. Um, I think I've said this already, but we also hope it to be a safe space for, for lots of different places. Uh, we have talked about potentially getting signs that have Braille on them because that's something that we can do and there can be a lot of future, future planning for this. So that's something, I mentioned a lot of these before, but it's not just for science classes. I think it'd be a great place for contemplation, for literature, for poetry, and for just relaxation. Other schools have done this, as I've said, so in case there's any concerns or issues. Um, myself and Catherine Laurent from the GPW and a few other members have gone to visit the one at Lawrence School in Falmouth and the one at the Falmouth High School. I've also visited the one at Falmouth Academy, as I said, but there are others across the Cape that have done this as well. And no one has complained of any of the issues and so we'll take questions later to see if you have any concerns about things, but, um, and Ian can address some of those issues too. But this has done, been done many times before. We are not the first for this and they have all been successful. And I think we know enough what the problems may be that we can kind of get ahead of it to make sure that everything runs smoothly. Just some pictures of kids at Lawrence. I did put on my list of supplies waiters so we can get out there. It'll never be very deep, so the issue of swimming is not an issue. Nothing, nobody will ever get below, you know, underneath their hips or anything like that. Most of it'll just be maybe up to your knees at different times, but we will be able to get in the water and I will have waiters. And we will have boots and we will be able to also play in the mud, take samples and get kids out there, um, in the real world. One of the cool things they do at Falmouth that maybe we could do here is they do cross-age teaching. So they bring, um, younger kids up and then they have seventh and eighth graders teach them. So there's lots of that interdisciplinary, intergrade stuff that's happening in Falmouth that I think this would be a really cool opportunity to bring something like that to our district too. And advanced students, advanced high school students, it would be a great spot and location to do some long-term environmental monitoring. So we can go out with the AP environmental science students, the class that I teach, and we can say, this is what it looks like in the spring. This is what it looks like in the winter. Maybe it's totally dry, which is why it's given the name of vernal pool. And this is what it looks like, um, in the summertime. So we can kind of see the progression of stages, the different species that come in, and how it changes as the seasons change. Future thinking. Right now, we just want to get it done and built. We want to make it available. Long-term goals. I would love to have benches. I would love to have signs. So as we continue to have more funding, I would love there to be, you know, kind of a self-guided, this is what you may find here. These are some indicator species that you may find here. This is some opportunity for you to kind of be here and learn and appreciate the site on a deeper level. And that's it for me. So I do want to thank Catherine Laurent because she has been very helpful in this. DPW has agreed to come in over the summer and cut down the few trees that will need to be removed in the site. And Ian and I and a few of those did a tour. There aren't very many, but there are a couple that need to be removed in this area. They're all flagged, which Ian will talk about. So if anybody's interested, I'm happy to meet them over there at the site and we can look through it so you can see where it's going to be. It's going to be right behind the shot put area at the high school. So as you're driving in, in the woods to the right. So really close to like the, behind the football field, that to the right.
Tom might go visit his side of the football field.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. Um, and we're, we're going to make sure that the grade going into it is as flat as possible, so it's accessible to everyone. Um, I also like to thank Stephanie Source, who's our department chair, because she has earmarked some of our department funds to help this. And Chris Brothers from Falmouth High School, because she has also given me a lot of information and given us a lot of security that it's going to be okay. All right, and so I'll hand it over.
Okay. Any more to?
No.
Well, thanks for having me. And, um, when we were approached by Shona to engage in this project with Mashpee, we immediately offered her opportunities to reach out to some of their schools that have built these wellens over the years, including, um, Chris Brothers over at Falmouth, who, um, really took this project to the tilt. She did the Cadillac version. We said to her, you can do the Honda version or you can do the Cadillac version. She went all in. So she created all sorts of features tied in to the vernal pool that Shona was describing. So there are a lot of opportunities and I think increasingly there's a lot of opportunities to make this an accessible habitat. So by virtue of the fact that this location is level, close to the parking lot, close to the school, there's a lot of opportunities to get people of all, all types utilizing it. So just a word or two about the actual construction. Um, it's, it's, um, something that we've done now seven times, as Shona indicated, across Cape Cod schools, both public and private schools. We've also built lots of wetlands and restored a lot of wetlands at Mass Audubon Sanctuaries, including the Schuman Holly right down the road, which was the genesis of this project. But this small-scale vernal pool work has escalated to much larger restoration work across the region. There's cranberry bogs being restored across the region. There's salt marsh work that's being conducted now to restore these valuable wetlands. So this little project is really, can be looked at as a demonstration project for students to understand the concepts behind ecological engineering and give them a chance to feel a tangible connection to it. And also to use it over the years, as Shona indicated, you know, there's all sorts of opportunities to learn about colonization rates, biological diversity. You can incorporate math, chemistry, physics, landscape design, all sorts of great elements. So it's, it's a fun project. And it doesn't really take that much to do amazingly. We use heavy equipment. We have a trained excavator operator that will help us build the wetland. The wetland is a buried fish safe liner that goes underground. So it's not like a koi pond that you could see a liner reflecting in the ground. It's buried underneath soil and the liner itself is sandwiched between these two pads, these geotextile pads. This is similar technology that they use for, um, for dumps. They cover up. And so we expect these liners to last buried underground a hundred years or more. And, um, Bevinghauser, who has built hundreds of these across the country for schools, um, for land trusts, for government agencies, public, private land, has seen this over the years. So it's a tried and true technique. It really works. Again, it's a two-day project. Um, Tom and I will be out in the field leading it. We'll have a trained excavator operator, Mike Manchuck, who we've worked with to build about eight of these, including Falmouth and the other public schools on the Cape. And, um, we'll incorporate a lot of the techniques with the students. They'll get the Don Hardhass and they'll come out and they'll carry this liner out into place. They'll help us align it. They'll help us cover it with soil. And so they'll have this connection to the whole project that hopefully will last for a while. Um, some of the questions we get from administrators about these projects is, one, is there any risk of drowning? Like Shona indicated, that these are never more than about 24 inches deep. We want them to be, um, ephemeral or vernal. So creating them any longer, or any deeper rather, is just going to increase the length of the hydro period and end up resulting in all sorts of things. You don't want in a vernal pool like cattails. It'll, it'll become a year-round wetland. We want it to be ephemeral so that it just targets the, the rare vernal pool species that are valuable, such as wood frogs, spotted salamanders, fairy shrimp, some of these valuable species. So, um, it's going to be very shallow, so we really don't worry about drowning risk. A lot of questions about mosquitoes. Is this going to create a, um, a source for mosquitoes across the campus at the school? We haven't seen that be the case. And we know that building functioning wetlands like these, those that have lots of diversity, reduces the likelihood of mosquito issues because these are predators that naturally take out mosquitoes. And as far as the harmful mosquitoes, the ones that spread West Nile, those generally utilize very shallow bodies like overturned tubs and tires and things. Those types of mosquitoes are restricted to small water bodies. They generally don't function or, or persist in these larger, more biodiverse wetlands. So it's really hasn't been an issue. I have heard of, of no issues regarding mosquitoes. And then in terms of just upkeep, these are designed to be self-sufficient. They require little or no maintenance. So there's no dams, there's no drains. You don't need to fill them. You don't need to bring water trucks in. They really function and act and look naturally. So those are some of the primary questions we get. Happy to answer other questions if you have them. But it does, it'll be about a two-day project. We've scheduled two days in late November to do the work. And, um, we're really excited about getting the school involved and giving you guys a living lab that you can use for all sorts of projects.
Right now, we have November 17th and 18th as the dates. We're hoping that those hold.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
For that informative presentation. Um, Kelly, if you want to start, if you have any questions?
I don't really have any questions. I, this is the coolest thing.
Something different, that's for sure.
But it's, and this is, this is probably a detriment to our teachers, like the ones that just walked out there, the dedication they have to the kids in this town. Because this is a way to, to get our kids out of the classroom, out of the fall walls and sitting in chairs and actually learn something. So Ms. Matelli, thank you. Thank you for being so dedicated to our kids and teaching them. I think that you, that you brought this about. Like I said, I just, I think it's a really cool idea and the fact that you can get, you know, who's going to be the ones that are helping you? Would it be the eighth graders? Is it the AP environmental classes? Are it the seventh graders? Is it all of them?
To be determined. I hope as many as possible. So, um, I have, I have to go through, there's, there's a checklist because Ian has done this before. So there will be, I will organize that as I have it planned right now in my head loosely. Don't hold me to all of this. Um, I'm going to have members of the Environmental Club take a full day field trip to work with us. And they will be in charge of filtering groups of kids throughout the day. So I think as many classes, most likely science classes, want to participate, we could probably get the whole school out in, you know, chunks of 40 to 50 minutes throughout the day. Um, that's the plan right now. It's very loose. I don't have any specifics to it, but on the day of, we could probably get a majority of the classes out who want to participate. And yes, it would be seventh graders. It'd be AP environmental science, but it could also be anybody who is interested. So that's, once I realize how many groups and what the timing and what all the jobs are, which I don't fully realize yet, then I'll hash all that out. And the Environmental Club members will be part of the leadership team during that.
Thank you.
Ryan?
So we didn't say that we had the funding first, correct?
Yes. Yeah, so I, I've written a grant. Um, I expect support from the Mashpee Environmental Coalition, who I've been meeting with. And they expect to give us a little bit of money and I have, um, so donated time from the DPW. And the rest of that is most likely coming from our science department funds.
Okay, I think that that's important to keep on our radar, um, just budgets and stuff that we're doing to support. I think the other thing for me is, um, a sticking point is the location. Why that location was selected, um, because I know that that corner, if you go to graduation or town meeting or anything else, people love to park on the grass over there. Um, so if it's going to be level, I would be a little bit more concerned about that. Maybe if we put like a little bit of fencing or something, like a small wooden, you know, low kind of fence or something to block it off, that would be my only concern because I'd be concerned more about being close around.
Okay, I'll address that, but I'll also hand it over to you. So we're not going to be changing the outside perimeter very much at all. The pool itself will be set back inside. So we're not changing the grade of the grass where people park. It will be in, I don't know, 10, 20 feet probably like, or maybe more.
Forty feet.
Forty feet, yeah, forty feet. So there'll be a path, but just a walking path that will be graded in and that's the only thing that will change. And the grade there right now is pretty flat. So even if somebody parks on it, it shouldn't make that much of a difference.
So there'll still be the trees for the buffer?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I don't know if you want to address that more.
Yeah, you wouldn't even see the wetland from the parking lot. It would be, as Shona said, about 40 feet from the edge of the grass. Not from the edge of the parking lot, but from the edge of the grass.
But some of those trees will be lapsed.
Yes, we'll take out as few as possible. In fact, with the excavator, you don't need as much of a width as you might think to get an excavator through. We can walk it through. So our goal is to take as few trees down enough, mark those trees that need to be taken down by DPW in advance of the day. And then on the day itself, or the days itself of construction, we will take additional smaller trees down with the excavator. So I don't see there being any impact on that shoulder of grass or the parking lot.
Okay. Yeah, I'm trying to make sure people can park on the grass. You really can't prevent that.
I don't think it's a question. But the tree perimeter will still be there.
Yeah, so I do have a couple of questions and I do not feign to be an expert by any means, so bear with me for just a moment. Um, so the adverse of the mosquito question that comes up often, recognizing the geographic distance from the fields. I know last year we had to do some spraying just to make sure that we had that under control. Are we concerned about any runoff or anything that would actually impact, um, the animal species that may be in that vernal pool? No, the liner really is the limit of water. If the water rises above the extent of the liner, the 40-foot diameter pool, it just gets absorbed into the ground. And there are no outlets to this. There's no stream outlets. It's purely isolated.
Adverse, like if something gets sprayed?
Oh, adverse to the actual wetland itself.
That was my question. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's isolated enough from where the spraying would take place. Is the spraying taking place on the fields?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would happen last year.
Yeah, that, that, but that was the first time it was done.
Yeah.
And that was because the, um, you know, the health restrictions after dusk just kept extending last year. So, um, you know, with the vernal pool, you know, this is a springtime event, so that was a fall piece with the, so that theoretically that pool would be mostly dry by that point.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, obviously you want to have cool critters in this pool and if there's a concern of any of that impacting that, you want to be mindful of it. So thank you for that.
Sure.
Other question is, you talked about the Corolla versus Cadillac plan, right? You said that this is somewhere in the in-between there? So the opportunities are vast for what Shona would like to do over time, but in terms of what we're proposing in the budget, it's very straightforward. It's been laid out on the budget. So, um, the, the additions could be things such as a pollinator garden. There could be ADA trail that leads to it, an official ADA trail. There could be, um, an interpretive kiosk that's, um, describing the, the vernal pool and the habitat. There could be any other sort of science artifacts that could be incorporated in and around the wetland. Some schools have built small sandboxes that can document the wildlife coming and going from the, the wetland, sort of like a etch-a-sketch. sort of like an Etch A Sketch kind of concept. You can set up game cameras. There's all sorts of study opportunities. But that's what I was referring to, the Cadillac group.
Yeah, the reason I ask that is because, first off, again, really cool, I'm thinking of, you know, other partnership opportunities. And as we think of like utilizing our team members like Consuelo and others who can really help to like nurture this, you've done a ton of work to try to secure the funding for this. But, you know, are there those opportunities where, you know, some of our local organizations or teams out there could donate those boxes or the birdhouses or like the things that you wanna incorporate in? And we wanna hopefully be supportive of those ventures as well, beyond just the living lab.
Consuelo is very much aware of all of this. She was at our meeting when we did the site survey. So yes, she's been in a loop on all of it. And yes, she is forward-thinking for the next phase. So my thinking is just, I need to get money for this. And then the next phase is, we can do all of these things. And it doesn't have to be a big change to add bat boxes or bird boxes. No big tree removal has to happen for any of that. So all of those next phases, you know, we could have a couple Cadillacs. I don't know. But I don't think that, it doesn't stop here. This is just, this is the foundation. This is the benchmark. We have to have this in order to do the rest. But yes, I have future goals. And Consuelo is a part of that.
Kira, you have anything you wanna add to this? Or any questions?
As a student, I guess, just the location of it. I just don't quite understand where it's located.
Kira is also a member of the Environmental Club, so she'll be on the leadership team.
I just wanted to know where it was.
Kira, while you look at that, one last beautiful question. There's no liability things or anything more that we can worry about as, like, from insurance or anything?
We might wanna double-check. I would imagine. I don't know. If we should, you know, maybe just double-check, like, yes, we probably should. I know, I understand the drowning risk is minimal, but, you know, drowning two inches of water. So we might need to look into the insurance part, but I don't see... Other school districts have done it. I'm assuming, I would assume. But maybe we should definitely do our due diligence and get the official, yes, this is okay.
That's a good resource to that.
Yep, I can get you in touch with Chris Brothers at Falmouth because she would probably, I'm sure she's already addressed that.
Yep. I remember Ms. Brothers from my time, so, yeah. So wouldn't be surprised if she dotted all her i's and crossed all of her t's. Is that it? Okay. So you guys kind of all answered mine. So bat houses are potentially in the future? Because I was thinking with the mosquitoes, I really appreciated that page in their adopt mosquito control because, like Brian and Dan, that runoff from the spraying, if we ever did have to spray it, I'd hate to see it adversely affect the vernal pool, whether it's the soil around it or whatever. But bat houses could also help with that. The species that grow in there also help with that. So that was good to hear. You kind of answered. So there is potential for K through six also being able to utilize the space as a classroom after a classroom. Granted, it'd be a short ride up the road, but still, kind of cool. Yeah, I think, sometimes running from May, two-hundred-year lifetime, sounds very sustainable. I was really, that's pretty cool. And, yeah, I think this is pollinator garden, ADA trail signs. Those all sound like really cool class gifts for any classes who might be thinking of what they could possibly do.
Stephanie's source about that too. So there are certain classes who have some funds who might wanna dedicate adventures.
Yeah. Yeah, no, this is fantastic. And thank you for having the foresight to wanna bring this experience to Mashpee. I think this is gonna elevate our classes, our science program. I think it's really, really cool, for lack of a better term. And I know the students are probably gonna really enjoy it too, so I'm looking forward to it. Do we need, we don't need to, I mean, you pretty much have everything go if you want.
Will it be open, like, there's nothing gating it off where the public can't access it off school hours?
I would hope the public does access it. I think that's absolutely fine. So there'll be no gates, no fences, no doors.
Well, because I know probably, I don't know what the Girl Scouts have to do for badges. Or like the Cub Scouts and the Boy Scouts and all that, using that as getting their badges and their belt loops and all that type of stuff. And the other thing was like with the signage and stuff, it would, you know, just kind of, and you may have thought about this already, the amount of different languages our population speaks. You know, the Spanish, English, French, Portuguese, Wampanoag, like, all of them signed so that each person feels like they...
Or a QR code, where they could just push a button and get that language. I mean, there's lots of possibilities. I can see, I see your vision. I will.
It is really cool. It really is. And I think the kids are gonna really enjoy this.
I think they will. And it's really designed to be low maintenance. Like, once it's done, it just does its thing. It fills in the spring and then it stays full or dries up or whatever. It's a very natural occurrence from after that. And just in case anybody else has any concerns, because it's an artificial wetland, it's not a jurisdictional wetland. There are no state protections on it. You know, we're not introducing any, there's no restrictions. We're not introducing any species. You can talk about the species that may come, but they come on their own. We don't introduce them. So it doesn't have any environmental protections as a wetland because it's artificial.
Does it get registered though? Or is there like a registry of artificial wetlands just for...
You could, I sent this to you this afternoon in the checklist that if you wanted optionally, you could contact your local conservation commission to ask permission, basically, this does not be considered a jurisdictional wetland in that it would really be more of a demonstration wetland for educational purposes, the living lab concept. But that's optional. Theoretically, if an endangered species happened to come along and establish in the vernal pool, very unlikely, then it could become an issue with regard to future development, right?
No, I think I would recommend maybe collaborating with the town's conservation commission just to maybe do a presentation to them, put it on their radar as well because I think that that could also tie into some of the support. If you do rely on some of the town departments to alleviate some of the budget and stuff like that, to make sure that people are good with this.
They have been made aware.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much. I look forward to November and seeing the progress on this. Very exciting.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
All right. Very cool. All right, now on to the report of the superintendent, so Dr. Thompson.
How are you? Good. So first thing, just update on enrollment. You can see that we are currently at thirteen eighty-nine. Since kind of springtime when families, they are moving, I do that so we can work down three students overall, but they've stayed relatively steady for the last third of the year. Couple things on looking forward. We do have our joint meeting with the Wampanoag Tribe coming up on the twenty-fifth. We did have tribal partnership meeting on the third. I don't know if anyone wants, I was not able to attend that. I don't know if anyone wants to give a couple.
I didn't bring my folder with all my notes, so my apologies. My brain.
Yeah.
Sorry.
We did have that quarterly meeting with the tribal education department on the third. Reported the athletic director. You can see that we had the baseball qualified for the tournament, girls tennis, boys tennis, girls lacrosse. We had eight qualifiers in track, three boys, five boys and three girls that went to the Division VI meet. And the boys lacrosse just barely missed making the tournament. Unfortunately, everybody was kind of knocked out in the first round. So we did get a long tournament run, but congratulations to them in qualifying for the tournament.
I'm gonna echo that and just congratulate just the next special because I know the girls tennis, it was their first time qualifying. They're in the AA this year, so congratulations to all our student athletes because those are not easy things to do.
And then flipping over to the outreach coordinator report. Big push right now is the community garden. And you can see that we now have four master gardeners working in the garden. We're also looking to add drip irrigation and just to keep that project expanding and going forward.
Are these volunteers, the master gardeners?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. Okay.
Again, just thinking budget.
Yep, they volunteered and they actually helped fund a lot of it through their grant. They provided, that Consuelo was able to obtain.
Awesome.
Do we do anything for volunteers?
Yes, we have the volunteer branch last week.
Hold on. Yeah, June fifth was the appreciation practice. We have launched a mobile, an online store. Hopefully, that will take up some of the slack in not having that separate storefront. And we are still, you know, the bus is still in process. We had an accident where a stone hit the glass somehow and busted it, so now we have to get that fixed. But we are close on that. Back page, you can see the sales pieces there in comparison. June obviously isn't over yet, but you can see that we are, you know, making progress there. Volunteer hours are up.
Does Consuelo have a table at the farmer's market? Do we know?
I don't know.
I think the last time you asked that, Kelly, I don't think we did.
The intention was to get the bus there.
Yeah, the intention is to get the bus there.
The bus is taken forever and forever and forever. So how about we make course over here and put a ten-by-ten pop-up ten?
I mean, we can ask. I don't know what Consuelo's schedule is or what, you know, manning that is because they're volunteers who would...
She's breaking.
The online site for the store looks good. I looked at it the other day.
No, it does. I just, I look at some of these numbers and I know that's because we had the store in the Commons where, you know, they're so high. And I've had, you know, I think people have reached out to, like, all parents reach out to each other and, hey, where are you getting this stuff from?
It's not just that though, but when we were in the Commons, we had the public going in as well. So you had people who were just shopping in the Commons and seeing the textiles that the students were making and applying and all the different things they were doing. So that was one plus to the store in the Commons, but I don't know.
Is there any, I mean, I know that the Commons is owned by, you know, a company, but has anybody ever tried to talk to them and say, hey, you know, do you have a space that you can donate or, you know, give us a break on?
Yes, that was partially why we started in that kind of an arrangement where we had a discounted rental space. And we, with like the contingency that somebody else came along to pay for rental even, which is why I think it moved, what, twice? Yeah. But then the last move, they were no longer willing to provide the space.
Okay.
I think Consuelo also looked over at South Cape by Roach Brothers. She looked into other places and it was just, it was not feasible, unfortunately, budgetary-wise or just to move everything. It became too high of a cost. So that's why we opted to go to the in-school store with the extended hours on, what is it? Tuesdays and Thursdays or, and then the bus was supposed, like, so that's why we give these updates on the bus because hopefully eventually we'll get everything back out because it was a great way to showcase what our students were making in our school district, so.
Did the inbox of people that we're seeing, you know, this time of year, I think it's just...
It all.
Yep.
Trying to get that stuff out there.
Well, hopefully, the online store will see some interest growing there. Then the other thing, I was asked to share with you the summer reading packets. And this is, the summer programming is an area for expansion. The first one has to do with the middle high school. There are definitely required reading for and work for AP courses at the high school. The, you can see those on forty-eight and fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two. When we get to the Quashnet, we are relying on the partnership with the Mashpee Library. And I believe, do we have a final, do we get final information from the library yet?
Our librarians are waiting, but...
But we encourage students to partake in that program.
So can we, thank you for this information. I did ask Dr. Thompson to provide this to us out of curiosity. We were talking a lot about our students and their ability to read at our last meeting and that got me thinking, well, summer reading's coming up. And I, the conversation that we had kind of started with summer reading, but then kind of grew. And I guess my thought and what I'd like to propose to the committee is that we have a meeting of the curriculum subcommittee to kind of discuss summer reading, the summer reading program and potential for a math and/or science kind of summer program. Not necessarily to add homework over the summer, but to kind of help kids realize that, you know, there's... I looked at this list and part of me was a little disheartened to only see three books on each list. And I don't know, I guess I just was like, ugh, this is slim pickings. And I guess I feel like there's just so many other options for kids who might, you know, find other areas, other content areas. There's so many genres of literature that are out there. And I guess my, what I, I'm wondering if the rest of the committee might entertain the thought of maybe having the curriculum subcommittee kind of dig into these programs because while the middle high school has specific books, they recommend the Coons and Quash, mostly the Quash. They rely really on the library's program as opposed to like their own program. I just, I feel like it becomes this optional thing as opposed to a fun and engaging thing. And there's also that equity piece of not everyone can get to the library, you know, over the summer. So there's a lot of pieces to it. I looked at, Dr. Thompson provided me some other schools and I looked at a couple other myself on my own about what they do over the summer. And there's some neat things out there that I think Mashpee could incorporate. I don't know, Kira, as a student, what are your thoughts on summer reading?
Yeah, I did see the summer reading letter and I was like a little bit surprised because I know of like, last year there was like a wide list that we could choose from and if it wasn't on the list, then we could pick. Coming for someone who actually, like, I really enjoyed reading, it was sort of disheartening to only see three books on there all which...
I mean, don't get me wrong, they're great books.
Yeah, I mean, I have read...
Yeah.
Speak your mind.
I have read books from like some of the authors, but just speaking with other students in my grade and just even ten through twelve, I don't really think, I think it's sort of, it's not really encouraging students to read through these programs because they only have like the three options. And so I was doing my like own research on like, where did we like get these like book recommendations?
So that's kind of why I'm saying maybe we need to refer this to the curriculum subcommittee to kind of work with, you know, the different principals or whoever would like to work on it. But definitely Dr. Connors and Doctor Assistant Superintendent Hill, right? Sorry, to kind of ask these questions. So I don't know if anyone would like to make that motion to refer this to the curriculum subcommittee? I mean, we don't have to meet right away. This is kind of already set. I'm not looking to reinvent the wheel right now, but I would like to look for next year because I do think, you know, we're not...
Now, these are, just so I'm getting this correct, because, you know, these are the only books that they can read. They can't say, oh, I don't wanna read, you know, any of the ones for grade nine. I wanna read this one instead.
What's gonna happen is when school starts, they're all gonna be in their classes working in groups based on the books. So if every kid is reading their own book, it becomes hard to do that. And I'm not, I think we have a lot of work to do. I think we have a lot of work to do across the board. And I think curriculum committee needs to talk about a lot of things. Because from my point of view, an English teacher could have a thematic discussion, right? Which it wouldn't matter what book you read.
Right.
And I think there's been a struggle with how to, because you also wanna make summer reading meaningful when you get into the secondary level. And I used to be an English teacher, so I totally get it, right? And you don't want the kids just passing the paper and then they never talk about... You want them to come in with their notes from the book. You want them to have engaging conversations. I think that's where the, you have to choose a book because now teachers will be able to group students based on the books that they've chosen. Now, there's a lot of work to do, right?
Well, I agree with Kathy, you know, referring. I think there's a lot to do, unfortunately, with reading. And it's not just here. It's everywhere. There was an article, I believe it was in the Boston Globe, written by twenty-twenty-five... There was an article, I believe it was in the Boston Globe, written by a twenty twenty five Massachusetts high school graduate that said, I don't know how I got my diploma because I can't read. That's very disheartening. So no, I, I will make that motion Kathy to refer this, what is it, the reading?
The summer reading program.
Summer reading program to the curriculum committee.
Thank you, Kelly.
I'll start on that.
Thank you, Dan. I just want to say, you know, to Principal Brady's comment, you know, it's not, and Kelly, to your comment, it's not just about reading the book. You know, like Principal Brady mentioned, there's a lot out there that can spark a student's interest. And I think, you know, you've got science fiction novels that can, you can incorporate science into it. You can, you've got biographies, you've got so, so many different nonfiction categories. You've got, there's just so many genres of literature out there that could get a student engaged in something that they might not have known they had an interest in. And, but then that builds, you know, like if you do read that science fiction, now maybe there's some science work that you could incorporate into it. So that they're not, that the students over the summer aren't necessarily walking back into school going, I don't remember anything I learned in biology. Well, I just read this book about what's in plants or whatever. Like, so there's this, this opportunity to cross. And some of what Dr. Thompson and I talked about were those opportunities to cross it, make those crossovers. Because, you know, like Kira said, as a reader, like you're not just going to want to read this. Sometimes you do want to read something different just to expand your mind a little bit, I hope. But also again, those students who might find reading not their favorite thing, if they have more options, they're going to be more engaged. So thank you, that's all I wanted to say about that, but we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Okay. Sorry, I just wanted to bring up one more point. When I was like looking through a website on, I found two of the books, it was on like a Massachusetts like teen award for books. And I think that must have been where most of the books were found. Because I found two books that were listed in the tenth grade category and then one which I think was listed in the eleventh grade category. I think the Holly Jackman book and then one of the other ones, I, I can't remember off the top of my head. But I think that's where they were chosen from.
Chairman Chair, I think my only discussion would be, um, that would kind of set the parameters around what exactly the curriculum subcommittee would be doing. I see it more as reviewing and or making recommendations, but I also understand that we're kind of up against a timeline here. And so I wouldn't want this to stall. I think that it needs to, you know, meet sooner than later. And another recommendation would be that the chair, Kira, or somebody from the student advisory committee also be part of that group to have that steering role if we could. Thank you.
Sorry, just wanted to clarify, just confirm, we're not, we are looking to make recommendations for this summers or for next years?
I was saying for next years. So I figure this summer's already pretty much set. I believe these have already gone out to families if I'm not mistaken. So I don't think there's opportunity unfortunately to change this year's, but there is an opportunity to look forward to next summer. And, and maybe providing, as much as I would love to do it this summer, I just, like you said, I don't think we could do justice to a review and the program and anything that needs to be recommended or looked at. We wouldn't have the time to do it justice, I think. And plus with it being summer and everybody kind of doing their own thing, I think, yes, we need to have that. We also probably need to find out what the other items are that that committee is going to look at so that we can efficiently plan those meetings. Because I do think there are going to be curriculum subcommittee meetings throughout this year on various topics. So this is just kind of the first one that popped into my mind because I was like, ooh, summer's coming, summer reading lists are coming. What am I going to be reading with my daughter this year? Because I do, I read the books. Last year was Clara and the Sun and I have to be honest, I did not like it. It was not very good. But I finished it. So that's my, my little, don't have to take my word for it, I'm not going to have to read it.
I think the other thing is if we, as we go through, I think, the year and we have some of these things, I think it's good to kind of put it aside on like a running list on potential questions that we want to put in the family surveys to just get feedback from the families to say, how do they feel about the summer reading?
Yeah, I mean, and most of us are parents here, we're all parents here and we all know what our kids are doing over the summer of summer. So we've all witnessed on various levels of what that looks like. So, yes, I agree. So we have a motion and a second on the table. Any further discussion?
This may not be per se the place, but for all of these books that are on this list, do you know through our CLAMP system, if there's audiobook options for these as well for our students reviewing that?
And the seven, in the seven through twelve list, they're all available on Sora, which the kids have access to, which has an audio option.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. I just think of multiple modalities. Appreciate it, thank you for the.
That was one of the things that they, the teachers and the English department really took into account is the ability to get somewhere to get a book.
Yep.
So the library has been made aware that these are the books on the list, so they will have some available. But they are available through the student accounts with Sora, which is all, it's like, it's almost like a secondary learning library that is available online. And kids can take any book from that, so they can read more books if they want to.
Reason I ask is I'm still on a seven month waiting list with our CLAMP system for a particular book that I'm interested in, so.
What about, does, does Sora do books on, like book on tape? Do they read it to you?
A lot of them are available audio. You can listen to them, you can either listen to them or you can read them. The good thing about having the online version is all of those accessibility features are there. So kids who need large print, they can just, you know, so Sora is great like that, yeah.
And like I said, I understand why the books are picked, that they pick, I kind of get it. I'm just worried about the interest of some of the students, like.
That was, that was partially why I wanted to reference to the, so.
That's, that's just one of my, like you said, we, we can, the subcommittee can talk about it and, you know, I don't want anybody not to do summer reading because there's not a book on this list that, that interests them. I love reading, but if it doesn't catch me in the first chapter, I'm putting it back on the shelf.
I think right now too, at this time, there's so many kids who just don't read. So just making them read a book might get them to realize, hey, I like reading. Those of us who read for pleasure, like will read anything and, you know, it's like, no, I'm not going to read that.
But sometimes you need that person to say, hey, here's this book about whatever, maybe you should check it out to, to spark that, so. All right, I'm going to move to vote if I, so Kelly, yes. Brian?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
And I also, I mean, yes, thank you. Okay. So thank you for letting me interrupt you there.
Yeah, you're welcome. And I just want to point out that this is, this actually is work that I have done several places before. And it is an evolution and it's really, it just can't be reading. It's got to be math, it's got to be science. There should be student choice in there, there should be student voice in there. It should be funded and at level, you know. And I, I shared, I shared the work that, from my previous district there. There are choice boards and games and all sorts of things that families can do. And access is important. Online libraries, the size of text and, and it's all important. So it's, you know, what are the first two things and then do that well and then keep building on it. Both of us, the stuff that you saw was basically seven years worth, culmination of seven years worth of work. At the first year it said this is not acceptable and then we just started, so.
And I'm happy to share that with all of you as well because it was really interesting to see the schools.
Okay, so last thing on my list here is the guidance report for the class of twenty twenty five. Eighty-nine percent of the class of twenty twenty five will pursue some sort of higher education after their graduation, which was Saturday, which was awesome. Seventy-one percent are going to a four-year college for, that's public and private. Eighteen percent are going to a two-year college and that's public and private. Military service thirteen percent. And Brandon Alves is going into the US Air Force. Dominic Klein, also the Air Force. And Deacon Wazone is going with Coast Guard. Thank them for their future service. And eight percent of the class is going into the workforce. Should you look at the colleges that kids have been accepted to, there's a wide range. And, you know, I, I told Lindsay, who was our valedictorian, that she's my first Yale and MIT acceptee. So it says a lot about the quality of the kids and the quality of the program that they're offered here in Mashpee, which takes some pride and some excitement about these incredible young people, what they're going to bring to the future of Mashpee. But hopefully Massachusetts hopefully won't let them out, we'll see. Then a quick, quick reminder, Alex Torres and his Latin Orchestra will be here tomorrow and Friday. They're doing an evening performance on Friday. The public is invited to and I believe that is free.
Yes, it is free this year.
It is free. And then Monday, unfortunately, will be the hundred and eightieth school day, it will be a half day. And everyone will sit there, summer break at that point.
All right. Well, thank you. I believe that is your final report with us, isn't it?
That is.
So we would be remiss in not thanking you for spending this year with us. We are grateful for your insights that you provided this year. You've, you've helped us, you know, maintain what we were trying to maintain, but also helped us move forward in some really big areas, communication being one. So you took that, shemak the challenge and ran with it and I am very grateful for that because that was something I think we definitely needed to improve on, so thank you. But again, just working with you over the last year has been, been a pleasure. And Lowington is going, Lowington, right? Going to be lucky to have you. But we did want to, sorry, we did want to get you a little memento of your time here at Mashpee. So we, we went to our school store and we got this beautiful cutting board, I guess. And it says on the back, with gratitude for your leadership and care, Mashpee Public Schools, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty. So we just, we wanted to thank you and I think you get this handy dandy.
You get a cooler bag.
Cooler bag as well with the Mashpee hum, but I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to try not to cry.
We couldn't let you leave without, you should know what's been.
Yeah, going to try not to cry. I should have put it for the, for the ice cream scoop, Dawn got that.
I'm sure you can go to his ice cream shop and see if he's using it, maybe.
Yeah, well, I, I, you know, and I, I also want to thank you folks, this has been a, a very special year. It was a great, this is, you know, people, oh, you know, Mashpee's great, you're going to love Mashpee. Yeah, I really love Mashpee. It, it's a really unique place. My teaching career actually started in a private school. And there's a lot of elements that was part of that school that is part of Mashpee. First and foremost, child-centered, really caring about kids. You can see it in all aspects of this district, how invested the adults are in the kids and how the kids respond to the adults. Because they know they care about them, they know they have their back, that is not normal. You can't teach that. You can, you can create a summer reading program, you can bring in curriculum, you can talk about it, you can teach that. But those characteristics are very, very hard to find. So these kids you just heard me read off the class of twenty twenty five are basically in a lot of ways getting a private-ish education. The amount of programming that this district offers, they, they cater to almost, there's only a hundred or so kids in a class and every kid has got a niche here. Every kid is able to connect to the school, connect to the adults in the school. And it really makes it a special place. I have enjoyed being here, the small intimacy has allowed me to get close to kids again, which is something that I have not been able to do since post-COVID. So it was re-energizing for me and an opportunity for me to kind of re-center, pick up and be able to move on to the next challenge. So, so thank you for that.
Thank you. All right. We may need to, our next item, budget transfers. We may need to have a Zoom meeting just to approve the budget transfers. They were not ready in time for the next meeting unfortunately, so we may need to plan a Zoom meeting. I don't know if we want to talk dates now or if you want to email Sherry some options and then she can kind of look at, pick three dates and email Sherry within the next, we have to do it before June thirtieth, so.
Yeah, well, some of them can happen in July, but I would like to have as many happen before. Because I want to be in the position where we're.
Yes.
Had the money where we want to spend it from, so.
Would it be possible to get that handout sent to us and approve those dates as a kind of trigger action stuff?
Sure, I mean, the other option, I mean, I don't know, will all of us, I know Brian will be there on the tribal side for the twenty fifth. I'm assuming he will be there for the twenty fifth, for the, for the annual tribal, tribal meeting, tribal council, I think.
Yeah.
So if we have a forum at that meeting theoretically, what's it going to be? We can do it very quickly, I mean, it wouldn't be, I would prefer not to do it at that time because I feel it's a little disrespectful because we are there as a guest of the tribal council, so I would prefer not to do that. I would prefer to do it as a quick Zoom because we've done those in the past where it's only five minutes more.
I agree with that.
I agree, okay, all right.
Unless, unless we could do like five thirty before that with the tribal council.
Which we could.
So that could, that could be an option.
And the partner.
The other date, the other date I was looking at would be maybe Tuesday to the twenty fourth.
Tuesday and twenty fourth would be hard.
The parking lot's up there.
The parking lot's up there.
Is there a, is there a, can we go in your office at the tribe?
The education department is, 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 is.
Okay, all right, so five thirty to the twenty fifth. All right, we'll deal with those budget transfers on that day. Thank you, that was quick and easy. The rest of it. School committee summer retreat general discussion, August second, twenty twenty five, should all be in your calendars still? We've yet to really decide, I think we said we were doing morning. But we hadn't quite determined the location and whether we were going to do it onsite or offsite. Because we had that discussion potentially, maybe, I mean, we could probably reach out to the library and do it in the big room if we wanted. We can do it here like we have in previous years.
Do we want to be in four walls, do we want to be outside?
It was that one year that it rained a lot.
Yes, there was that year.
And that would be my luck, I was going to say.
Well, my only thought about being outside is like, we do actually do like written kind of work and stuff like, or looking at papers. I guess we could find it outside some, but I don't know.
But what are your thoughts, Scott? Do you want me to go to the mic or does it matter? Um, I, I suggest inside, one of the big items we really need to tackle that day is the district review that's coming up from Mashpee. So we do have some work to do. There's the camera. And I'm open to where and I defer to you to set the actual time that you want. I'm very flexible, so you're all down here, so you let me know.
I would say nine to twelve or eight to twelve. Because I also would like, that is also a time we're going to talk about, so we're going to do the district review. But I also would like to review, that's usually when we look at our self-evaluation and kind of set our goals for the year. So that, and we have what we're going to talk about next, which is the strategic plan update. And that, we use that to align and set our goals based off of that. So we need to set a little bit of time aside for the goal setting so that we know what our focus is going to be for the coming year. But, so I would, I mean, if we want to, nine to twelve, I mean, I'm fine with that.
I'm good with that.
You agree with that?
Yeah, it's a good time. And I, I'm also saying, I mean, the library or I think utilizing some of the other buildings that we have, I mean, we're here for every meeting. We can do a lot of work here, but.
The high school's going to be out, but just because the high school will be having the work done. But, yeah, I like that point, Brian. It would be nice to maybe get out of our normal thing space so that maybe new ideas flow. I'll, I'll look at the Mashpee Public Library and maybe the Coombs School. We can find maybe a space in the Coombs, like in that building.
I don't think I even like the art room or, not the art room, the music room or something where there's a little bit more space.
The conference room.
Yeah, draw it in, yeah, whatever works. Climate control now, so that's lovely.
Exactly. All right, okay, so nine to twelve, August second, twenty twenty five. We're, we're locked in, we just got to lock in that location now, so we're almost there, we're ninety percent of the way. Okay, but that then leads us into what you have before you on pages fifty four and fifty five, which is the gap year plan for success. Kelly and I met with Dr. Thompson, principal, all of the principals, Christine Brown, I think who else was there?
Pam was there.
Pam, who, Dr. Woods was there. I think that was everyone that was there. And we, because as you all are aware, we are kind of. And we, because as you all are aware, we are kind of, and our strategic plan is ending this year. We do need to start a new one. But in the meantime, while we organize and determine who will be part of that new strategic plan group and start making those meeting plans, we did need something to kind of tide us over for the year while we build that new plan. Excuse me, during that day, we didn't have a forum, so we weren't able to officially form a meeting, but we did kind of workshop. So what you see before you is what came out of that workshop. We kept the four pillars for the time being. But then under, on the, I think on the front, you can see the strategic initiatives that we kind of focused on. If I'm not mistaken, and anyone, feel free to jump in and correct me if I'm misremembering anything. But then on the second page, we kind of took those, those, what, five points and made action plans, or action steps for each of them. So for portrait of a graduate, we'd like to refresh the portrait of a graduate, the staff administration and staff. We would like to develop a process to fully integrate portrait of graduate by grade level. We introduced it all those years ago and people were like, yeah, portrait of a graduate. But we kind of felt in our discussions that, that might have started to fall a little flat. Like what, what exactly is it? What does it mean? What are we measuring? What does it look like? We've got a great groundwork and we've got a great base and we've got a great portrait of a graduate, but now it's taking it to that next level, which might help to refresh everybody at that time. So that's why you're seeing those. Teaching and learning, strategic initiative three point three. Ensure tier one instruction is conducted appropriately at all grade, at all grade levels. Do you want me to read through all of these or do you wanna?
Can I just ask a quick question? So when we, and sorry, not significant. When we were talking about refresh, I think of, is that, is that consistent with creating kind of like a strategy around continuous learning? Because I think it's one thing to like have a refresher for folks that have been sneaked in in the past, but don't, maybe nudging. And then I, then I think that there's like new staff members, new teachers, like how do we build that in? I'm assuming that's baked into this.
That was the intention from our discussion. Again, all of the principals gave fantastic, like it was, it was a really great discussion. It was very collaborative. Everybody was sharing, like it was just a very open sharing session of like, these are things we as administrators are seeing. And Kelly and I were providing both the parent side and like the school committee, kind of like, these are things we would like to see. Again, this is open, if you, as, you know, if the rest of you see anything, we do have to vote to adopt this tonight. Or I guess we could, I would like to vote to adopt it tonight, but I know it's also kind of the first time you're all looking at it, looking at it. But if there's any questions or anything you think we missed or need to add to it, we can definitely do that. But these, again, were the five places and action items that we thought we could accomplish in a year, at least make some substantial progress. And I don't know, again, Dr. Thompson, Kelly, anybody who wants to add to it. But like I said, it was a really great workshop and I, I felt very productive after we looked at it. Like, okay, we got slammed. We know what we're doing.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, you, you always want to have a pretty ambitious strategic plan. And if you do one hundred and ten percent of the plan, then it really wasn't that ambitious, right? So, you know, so this is where these, these five pieces are. And these are parts just to kind of come full circle and, and finish it up. And that allows Dr. Connors and the new central office administration to do a deep dive entry plan and look at what's working, what isn't working. And then January, February, start the strategic planning process and really dig, dig in deep. But this is enough to keep the district moving in the direction you've already approved, kind of finish it up. There are some things that just need a little more time. There's some great work this year around MTSS. You have a great portrait of the, portrait of the graduate with rubrics. We just need to bring it all the way into the classroom so that we're seeing it and kids are knowing that that's what they're doing. You know, so that, that's kind of what this is. So what happened is that, you know, we did a deep dive with where we were, you know, with the plan. And I did report part of that out during the superintendent goals and pieces through that. So these are the parts of where we saw the gaps and we talked about that. And then we came together and put together the, the action plan and highlighted these five, these five areas.
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion to approve the Mashpee Public Schools Gap Year Plan for Success, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six.
Thank you.
One second, Dan. Thank you, Brian and Kelly. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And I also am a yes. Thank you, everyone. Got some work to do. All right. Now onto new business. We kind of touched very briefly. We have on June twenty fifth at six P M, the Mashpee Public School Committee Mashpee Landmark Tribal Council Annual Check-In Meeting. If anybody has anything they would like to discuss, please let either myself or Sherry know if there's any agenda items you'd like to bring forward. Usually this is a chance for us to speak to the tribal council and kind of connect with the leaders of the tribe and kind of give them an update on the past year. I don't know, I do want to know, and I'll check with Sherry too, if we got the picture that we typically give the tribe of the graduates. Don't know if that picture was taken this year now that I think about it.
I do believe that it might have been taken by the tribal center.
I know at the tribal center, they did, they took a picture during the Walk of Honor.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll check with Sherry and make sure, because typically as it gets, we give to the tribal council of their graduates for the year. And I totally just realized now about that. So we'll look into that. But again, if you have anything you would like to discuss at that meeting or anything you feel would be pertinent to bring forward to the tribal council, please let myself or Sherry know. We'll get it on the agenda. I always see this as a very, very important meeting. It's kind of one of those situations, and we're sitting in the halls of a sovereign nation in front of their leaders. And I kind of treat it as if I was presenting to Congress, honestly, because that's the importance of this meeting. So we just want to make sure we're continuing to foster those relationships and looking for ways to improve on those relationships. So again, anything you have to say, please, let's get it on the agenda. We do have to have that posted soon, so the sooner the better.
Think we can add like facility usage and stuff like that with the partnerships? I know that the tribe's paddle committee had asked to use the parking lot. And it was the town manager that came back and said, well, yeah, they're willing to waive it. But, you know, when the school wants to have events over there, they don't want to be charged for it. So I'm not sure what events were charged for. I know AC Prom is obviously funded and we have, you know, funding for that, but I don't know what else is being charged. So I think just moving forward, if there are any events that we do have, making sure that we are collaborating and, you know, making sure that those things are waived and we have that mutual understanding that, you know, if they want to use the building, we can let them use the building and vice versa.
I agree with that. Happy to discuss that, but only seems fair. Okay, thank you, Brian. Okay, we had a bit of a discussion too, and I don't know if it was, I think it was at our strategic plan or Kelly and I were talking. Where did we start this?
We started at the strategic plan.
We started, yeah. We, we kind of started talking about the website. And while the website has seen some improvement from its very early days, there was discussion that perhaps it could go through a little bit more of a review for both user, like end-user functionality and just what to include, where to include. There's a lot of information on there, some things you have to click through at least five times to get to it. Just kind of looking at the accessibility of certain things, what to feature on it. You know, it, it is difficult to navigate. And I know students, you guys have Google Classroom, so you're not necessarily on the school's website as much, but, you know.
Or like athletic registration, sometimes it's difficult finding on the website.
So yeah, there's, so the, the thought was, again, not really discussing it too much tonight, but possibly referring this to the outreach working group to kind of talk about recommendations or maybe working with Consuelo to kind of go through and section off. You know, like I'll look at this little tab and make note, just kind of to work through it and see where there are ways to possibly improve the user experience of our website. I know sometimes like I'll go to try to find something school committee related and I'm like clicking and clicking. And it's like, oh yeah, it's here instead. So I wondered, I mean, if, I don't know if the committee is in agreement with that. If so, we would just need to vote to refer that to the working group. But that was my thought behind this agenda item.
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion to refer the website review to the outreach, outreach working group.
Thank you. One second.
I'm happy to second, but I also have a comment.
Okay.
So I guess career reference here. We just recently went through a review of our website. And I think the first pass was originally done by the folks who are managing and able to know like the backend user features and like what could be maximized, streamlined, updated. Personally, I, I think that it's kind of hard to, as a committee, go in and say, I think, I think we can speak to like, we want to see this, this, and this, but at the end of the day, is that feasible, not feasible? So I don't see any issues with referring it to the outreach working group. But I think it would be kind of a moot point if it didn't include someone who is able to provide a line of sight into what's feasible and not feasible.
I agree, and it may be a process. It may start with that conversation of, you know, who is managing what is the platform and having that base understanding of what the website is. But again, if the work, if the outreach working group is willing to take that on and kind of begin those discussions to then form a plan for a more extensive review. It was more just kind of to get the conversation started and I guess I went more with my end goal than I did with baby steps. But yes, I think, I, I agree, it, it is helpful to know those things, so. Any other discussion?
I guess my only input would be once again, making sure that any time we do outreach or some of these subcommittee meetings that we have, a representative from the student advisory committee there to make sure that we have that input. And maybe that's something not that the chair does, maybe that's something we talk about at a joint meeting or something. We'll get back to groups and say, hey, what are you interested in? Just like when we reorg, we pick our kind of different committees, commission, liaison duties and stuff like that. And that way it could help us kind of mentor people, make sure they're focused on policy. They want to focus on all the stuff that we're supporting the law as well.
And even if you can't make it, it would be a way for you to get the materials to review and you could provide statement to the working group or the subcommittee. And I'm saying you, I mean the general you. But it would be a way for all of you, like, you know, we gotta make sure you're getting packets too so that you're not, you're able to follow along with us. But that's, we'll get there.
Yeah, you can definitely like picture people who are elected that would really enjoy like following up. Like I know Fernanda, she's really into the environmental aspect as I am. But I know she mentioned like the program where like, she was sort of just starting to see all the trees cut down, which that's like a totally different discussion.
Yeah, but I, I've heard similar concerns from students and, but it's part of the work.
And I, I, I believe, you know, honestly, is there a reason why we don't have a student representative on our subgroups?
We do. We, it has been open from day one. We're in our third year of our student advisory committee. So a lot of the first year was kind of establishing, okay, we have it, now what is it? Second year was, okay, we've had it for a year. It was kind of this, but we need to evolve to this. Now we're into year three and it's hopefully, I'm, I'm already talking to Ms. Lynch about, I will be going in to kind of talk to the student advisory committee and helping mentor a little bit more like Brian said, to say, here's your packet. Like you guys, you're able to discuss anything on this packet. If you have a comment or you have a question, the only thing you can't do is vote on this, but you are able to participate in discussions, so.
I think it's just, it's, I think it's more, it's helpful for us as the committee and as the adults. But I think it's also helpful for, for the kids to understand why things are done. Or, you know, do you, do you know what the policies are? Do you know what all the policies are? You may, but you, there may not be other kids. Or giving them the information that they need so when their peers come to them and ask them the questions, you know, they have an answer.
And that's the whole purpose of it, so yes, you are right on the money and we will, we will get there.
A lot of people were saying like, there was a bunch of communication, a lot of things, but you, we'll get there.
We're, we're on it. I have confidence. All right, so we have a motion and a second on the table. Any further discussion? Dan?
Oh, yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
I also am a yes. Okay, thank you. The next one, I'm not sure we need to handle this one anymore because a different path was taken, but.
It still should be.
It should probably still be reviewed.
Yeah, this is not, this is not, I don't think this is current.
No.
Not the current.
Okay. Okay, so that being said, we have before us policy FFA. I don't know if someone wants to, like, here, take a look at the thoughts and see. About memorials. And it was kind of brought to our attention recently that there was a, a wish to put a memorial bench in. DPW had expressed some concerns about it and basically felt that it should not be placed where it should be placed. And partial, part of that was because we do have this policy in place. Excuse me. So the ask before us tonight is to refer this to the policy subcommittee, which I think is already reviewing another policy as well. So I don't know if you want to add this to your upcoming agenda, if we decide to refer it. But basically, as Dr. Thompson said, it would be to ensure that we're compliant with the current policies that are out there for memorials.
I would make the motion to refer this policy to the committee.
As you do. Thank you, Brian. All right, any additional discussion?
Yeah, I guess I have a discussion. I thought that we already had a plaque or something right outside of the gym for one of the former students that passed away.
So we, we have the memorial garden itself, which has stones for each of the students we've unfortunately lost before we should have. There's also a, a rock memorial for a student that died post-graduation, unfortunately. So there is that memorial as well. I'm not sure that there's any memorials here. There are memorials here, aren't there? We have two. What are they? Remind me.
There's another one at the high school.
There's one right out by the front stone.
Oh, that's right, yep. So there, there are, but at this policy, again, the committee would kind of just want, or the subcommittee would want to just kind of make sure that this covers it because I think it says, it says places designated primarily. Like it's basically saying there's designated places for them. And then it also talks about permanent memorials within the school shall be limited in form to perpetual awards or scholarships. So if we go by this, it's possible that our memorial garden can be out of compliance with our own policy. So that being.
Yeah, your current practice does.
Yes, and we're, we're not matching our current policy. So policy subcommittee, if you don't mind, would you take a look at this one and bring it up to Coon so that our memorials are not in violation of our own policy? So again, motion on the table, seconds. Any further discussion? Kelly?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
I am also a yes. Thank you. And then last but by no means least, I don't know if you all had a chance to look at what was in the link here, but MASC did send out something about, the Joint Committee on Education is going to be meeting soon to discuss a few bills that are coming before the House. Some of them are in regard to transportation, some are curriculum-based. And it's just, I, if you had a chance to read them, I wanted to know if the committee would support sending a letter as a committee in favor of those bills to our legislative delegation to help get these bills passed because some of them do and will affect Mashpee. And I just wanted to just put that before the board for, for committee for a second.
Firstly speaking, I think it's a fabulous idea. I think in our conversation recently with one of our representatives, he had shared that across his desk, he has looked at one hundred and fifty-five different bills that he has different expertise or lack of expertise in. So being able to have that backup information from constituents and shareholders is really important to them. And also beyond just a formal letter, also a request to have a voice in those conversations at times. So I would say that if we are considering this, not only, you know, requesting prioritization of some of these bills, but also if committee members are willing to participate in discussions so-called to talk about why that, why it's important to Mashpee as a school district.
Brian?
Um, I guess for me, I would be more interested in making sure that it's kind of focused on the legislation that would impact us directly. I think that some of my concern or hesitation would be not gauging the parents or stakeholders before, you know, we throw our weight behind.
before, you know, we throw our weight behind some legislation and that could ultimately, you know, not end up being favorable and controversial.
I didn't, honestly, I don't know that I saw any that were controversial in the bills that were included in this matter. They were mostly, there were, there were a bunch that were about transportation, because transportation costs are going up, so they're looking to regulate those increases so that, you know, school districts aren't faced with really insane transportation costs. Some of them were about rural schools, which we're kind of on the fringe of, but the way things are going, you never know, we could end up in that designation at some point. So I didn't, personally, I didn't see anything that was controversial, but I mean, I defer to all of you. If you did feel there was one that we should not mention, or like, you know, to your point, if we should only focus on the ones that we feel directly impact Mashpee, that's fine. I have no issue with that. I just, personally, I didn't, when I reviewed them, I didn't see anything that looked.
Yeah, if we follow the same process we do with MASC, when we bring all those together and then we make our recommendations on a committee to say, okay, then, you know, if there's three of us majority, we'll kind of support it. We do, you know, when the delegate votes on our behalf.
Sure, I just wanna, we'll have to double check the deadline for public comment. And again, if, if the committee's not comfortable with it, that's totally fine. I have no problem writing as a private citizen as well. And I would encourage any, any other families who are interested in, in sharing, you know, their thoughts on these bills to, to write their own letters. But again, it's totally, I'm, I'm fine anyway. I just wanted to bring it up as a discussion point to see what you all felt. Kelly?
No, I felt say, I mean, there's a lot of stuff in those bills that come across as politicians' deaths on a daily basis and just a lot of it doesn't, very special. Mashpee, the Cape in general is, is special and Mashpee's special. So I, I would not wanna put our word behind something that had absolutely nothing to do with us.
That's fair. So yeah, that link does link to all of the ones that were provided by MASC as the ones that they will be submitting comments on. So if there's ones that, you know, I'll, I'll go back through and I'll put together the list of the ones that seem like Mashpee specific or in, like a direct impact on Mashpee, um, that, that's totally fine by me. If you wanna go just with the ones that directly impact Mashpee, um.
I agree with that.
I think. Okay, 'cause I do think that there is a time, like the public comment set period is coming up. So I don't, I just don't wanna miss that window to submit that letter.
Because it also being upon the conditions to approve it based upon, on a draft being sent to the committee by email or something, if that will be objected, then it means that that's.
You could always put it in that five thirty, if I can get it turned around, coming up with Sherry's help. But then we could put it in that five thirty with meaning to the want to. Does that work? Add it to the parking lot. Parking lots are where we put things to think about, so.
That's right. Physical parking lot.
So physical parking lot, okay. All right. So does anyone wanna make a motion to draft the letter so that we can get that formally?
Are we making a motion so you can draft the letter?
However you want to word it.
Madam Chair, I move that we make a motion to have the chair draft a formal letter of comment to the Joint Committee on Education regarding current legislative matters or policy proposals pertaining to the Mashpee Public School District.
I'll stick with that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Kelly?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I also am a yes. Items the chair did not reasonably know in advance, it believed there was something. And it might end up in our quick five thirty, which might be more than, it might be a ten minute parking lot discussion.
Or if it's ten minutes, who's running down it?
Something, oh, um, oh, I, so I had, and again, this is just something you can, we can email Sherry with our thoughts on it individually. But we had discussed really quickly, and I know it's not on the agenda, but just a quick look at your calendars. I think we had said shortly after Fourth of July, I was thinking that it would be beneficial if the school committee hosted a welcome reception for the new administrative team. I know powwow is Fourth of July weekend, correct? So we would have to do it after that as well. But we were thinking to do something kind of like five thirty to seven, maybe outside out front here, maybe have like a cornhole tournament or something that would engage not just the littles, but also our older student families. So that everybody, community would be welcome, but just like an informal kind of hi. We're your school committee, here are the new people that are gonna be interacting with your kids on a daily basis. And here are the old familiar faces that are still here too, so don't worry, it's, we're, we're moving forward. So it was more a thought of, you know, how can we engage everyone, get everyone together informally to just make that first introduction to families who are around. Again, kind of looking right after powwow, Fourth of July. So sometime if you could look at your calendars and see if there are any evenings that could work to do something like that. I have spoken with Dr. Connors about it and she's fully on board, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I think that July is a tough time for families in regard to travel or other things that are going on. So I, that's the only caution I have. And then I'm also thinking, are there opportunities to maximize events that are already taking place? Like I think of early September is the backyard barbecue, which typically draws a lot of our quash and KCC folks.
But the public typically isn't allowed at tho, those events. And I wanted it to also include members of the community who are stakeholders, but might not necessarily have students in the school.
All right.
I understand what you're saying and I'm not saying that we couldn't incorporate those into the current longstanding events as well. But my thought was more of a townwide welcome reception.
Yeah.
Introduction to, and go from there. But again, it's not on the agenda, so we can't really get too much into conversation. I just wanted to put that out there because July is close, so if we do wanna do something.
I agree, Dan, though. I think July is, I think July's gonna be tough to get people. I'm thinking maybe, you know, towards the middle of, end of August, if we don't do it in September.
I just was trying to also, the reason for July was, one, they're just getting started. Two, August, the end of August, you start getting into leadership retreats, planning, all of those things that the administrative team really starts getting very busy with, I guess you could say. Not that they're not busy, but that, again, just something to think about. We'll talk about it at a future date unless Dr. Connor comes over to say something.
So just some thoughts that have been swirling around up here as well that I'm thinking about doing. I've reached out to Sherry, some ideas I have, like I Love Us, you mentioned the pop-up tent earlier. Barnstable County Fair is gonna be like my vision, sorry you all, is to just really be as present at as many community events. It says, we are Mashpee Public Schools, come meet us and greet us, so that that's very public. I understand it's not some, your point of the school committee piece, but I, I'm wondering if we might work to capitalize on some of those pieces too. Zip trip, Boston twenty-five is in Mashpee. I think it's July twenty-fifth, it's definitely that third week. And so I've already said, let's get a booth there. Consuelo's already reached out to Mashpee Commons. And so we're just trying to get some of those things so that we're out and about in the community in the spaces where our stakeholders already are as well. So just wanted to plant that seed too, so if there's ways to capitalize on some of those.
Fourth of July.
Opportunities in maximizing, like I know Rec Center usually has a presence at the Fourth of July barbecue.
And we have in the past had a tent to have that.
Yeah.
So yeah, there's, there's opportunities. Again, we can put this on a future agenda to kind of talk, but that was kind of the conversation that's been started. Just again, a more informal way for families, community members who might not go to those other events to have a chance as well. So put a pin in that, we'll talk about it more. And that being said, I will entertain a motion, the final motion?
Sorry, can I just do, if possible, just a quick call out? A lot of, as we wrap up the end of the year, a lot of respect for the school principals. I just wanna pause for a moment and show gratitude for that. Ms. Brady, the Walk of Honor was beautiful to watch. Thank you for time to put into that. Field days, oh my goodness, I couldn't physically be there today at KCC, but photos and videos were beautiful and the quash one was amazing as well. So thank you guys for everything that you did, tend to be a wrap up. Just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate that. I think you speak for all of us, so thank you, all of you. Anybody else, anything else?
Um, I just wanna make sure that we kind of circle back. I know that when the former superintendent had departed, we had talked about possibly dedicating this space or something to her, even if, you know, we didn't know if she would come back at the time. But I don't want that to be something that we miss, because, you know, time keeps on passing by. And yeah, I'd really like to see us at least take action on something like that sooner than later and see if we can, you know, bring her back and give her a proper dedication.
Okay. Added to my notes. All right, anybody have anything else? Who would like the honor?
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.